Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under-
Okay, we're gonna, um, good evening, welcome to the February twenty-second planning board meeting. We're gonna shuffle around the, the agenda. Um, I believe most- So with that, um, first on the agenda is Kiwi, um, Country Day School, public hearing. Actually, why don't we do the, I did say we're gonna start with number three. Let's do number three Willowood. Mike, number three.
For parking spaces, parking space side, size and gravel parking spaces. There was a noise study done by Eric Thalmeyer, um, that was confirmed by Epsilon. I guess the, um, town hired a, another sound person to verify- ... replaced. I think that you had pictures earlier, so that was one of my comments earlier. The ones down below had to be replaced. They were getting aged over the-
Thank you. Uh, so yeah, essentially, or comments have been general stormwater permit. Applicant acknowledged the need for a permit. Uh, SWIP is currently under review. Uh, applicant requires supply stormwater maintenance agreement. I believe they provided that. I think we have to give it to council to review and just approve. They should note that the applicant should note the schedule lay along with the bond must be provided. Um, applicant noted the need for a performance bond associated engineering fee. Uh, the only detail comment I have is the wetland limits must be shown on the drawing. The applicant has acknowledged this comment and will work with the department to determine if this requirement is needed as the wetland evaluation validation from the state was performed in twenty of nineteen. Uh, and the validation map is still in process from the state.
Thanks, Rich. And Pat?
Um, all of my general planning comments have been addressed, Mr. Chairman. So, the Falheimer report, which was prepared by Willowood, was reviewed by our, um, separate independent third-party consultant. Um, that has been reviewed by Falheimer once again, um, and, or I'm sorry, the other way around. Um, our guy has reviewed their response to his comments. Um, so we haven't gotten the final sign off from our guy, but apparently they've addressed all the comments. Um, our guy was, um, generally satisfied with the, the methodology that was used, but there were some technical comments in there that he required some additional confirmation from. So that's where we are with respect to that. And this is an application that's ready to be set for public hearing, so we did get public comment on this.
Great. I think by now we've, um, all been out and toward the property, which I think is, is good first. Any, any comments from the board here before I turn it over to George?
Hi, um, uh, I'm confused on two issues, and I wonder if you can help me. Um, the sound level testing was done for a decibel level of what, sixty or sixty-five?
Sixty.
Sixty. And, uh, I believe the town ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, I may be wrong, uh, suggests that if it's an impulsive, uh, sound, that it should be done at fifty-five.
No, sixty-five-
George, speaking, uh, introduce yourself also, please.
Yeah.
Yes, my name is George Galpinie. I'm, uh, one of the officers, vice president of Willowood Gun Club. I'm also its attorney, uh, and chairman of Sporting Clay's, uh, operation. And I've got extensive experience in shotgun support specifically, Sporting Clay's, if you'd like, I've been going for that. I've done that before, but I've got extensive experience, both on a national level, representing New York State through the governing body, the board, as well as the, uh, president of the New York State Association of Gun Clubs in this state. So, I've got a lot of experience in, uh, the country and the state of the state, but to answer your specific question, it's sixty-five, otherwise, uh, but if it's the impulsive, then it drops it to the sixty. Uh, so your correct level has dropped, but, uh, sixty-five versus sixty.
And, and your testing was done at sixty?
Yes.
Okay. Second question is, um, with reference to the residence that is at Five Wilson Road, can you point to that on the map?
Um, let's see.
George, can, I'm sorry, George, George, I'm sorry, it's just for the TV. Can you take a microphone with you? There should be a port. Are you, yeah, um, just for the TV.
Yes, uh, Five Wilson Road doesn't appear on this map, uh, because the town line, uh, is, let me see, where's the, town line is over here to the, the south, and Five Wilson would be somewhere about six inches below-
Okay.
-the bottom of this map over here.
And, and was the testing for the sound with respect to that residence, was the test performed on the property line?
Uh, it was, the, the measurement was done in the road in front of that house. That's one of the best locations. Uh, and what was done, the methodology for the noise report was, uh, ambient sound was measured in a number of different locations as well as-
As well as, uh, specific testing with, with gunshots being fired on command. You know, we were arranged on cell, uh, cellphones. So the report lists five measured locations, but then there's a very sophisticated program that the engineer used to calculate everything.
So, I, I guess the question derives from, um, a suggestion that I read in the file, not your correspondence from, from the resident, that, um, the town law requires testing for this on the, on its property, their property line as it borders your property, your property.
Uh, the, the town ordinance does that, but remember, we're an existing club, so the existing trap fields, particularly the trap fields that are close to the property line, uh, would never, could never satisfy that. So what we've, we've done is, um, uh, done the testing that would not exceed that at all. So the measurements that he gets are gonna be loudest from the existing trap fields. Uh, so if you went from his property line or our property line adjoining them, um, i- it's less than what he's currently getting, which we're grandfathered in because we predate the ordinance. And in fact, there's the issue about the general business law that, uh, applies a much higher level. Uh, and we haven't taken that, uh, approach here. We wanna work with the town, but that would raise it to ninety decibels.
So I guess one area of clarification I think the board needs, if it's okay with the rest of the members, um, is maybe get clarity from our council, Joe, as to, uh, what takes precedence here, town law or the GBL?
Sure, I'll take a look.
That's all.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, how long is Willowood? When did Willowood open for business? I'm just curious.
Nineteen fifty-five.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Has it always been a gun club since nineteen fifty-five?
Uh, yes, it's always been a gun club. It was originally also pistol and rifle, uh, as well as the trap fields. Uh, we do not shoot rifle and pistol, uh, which, quite frankly, rifle in particular is vastly louder than shotgun. I mean, you look at the internal pressures of a shotgun barrel when a round is fired, you're having a sudden surge of pressure, about fourteen thousand pounds per square inch. Some of the really high-powered rifles can bump that all the way up to ninety thousand pounds per square inch. Those pounds per square inch equate to noise levels.
George, I'm, I'm anxious to get you in for a public hearing, but I just have a couple more questions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, there was two stations in particular, I think we had problems with, in the back there. I forget the numbers of them. You were gonna put some, you were gonna build them out a little differently?
Well, thirteen and fourteen are the stations that we're proposing to put wings on, uh, sidewalls.
That, exactly.
Sidewalls. Uh, and we've also proposed to put, um, uh, soundproofing materials, uh, inside, on the shooter's side of that.
Exactly. Toward I was out there. Right. So that hasn't been done yet.
On the, well, we're, we're shut down. We're not operating the Sporting Clay's course. So, uh, in fact, we have a stop work order.
Right, I just didn't know if you had, okay, so you didn't wanna make the investment.
Yeah, so, right. So, because the sound absorbing material is actually degradable by UV rays, we put, this goes on first, uh, but like a rubberized material goes over it to block the UV rays. So these, this is how it would go on the walls.
I'm glad I asked. I just, I know there's a stop work, if you will, stop order, but I just wasn't sure how far, if at all, you got along with construction.
We, the existing ones at thirteen and fourteen are up one wall. They're, uh, uh, twelve feet wide and, and ten feet high, uh, and those are gonna have, um, sidewalls or wings on them.
Would you point to those stations on the map, please?
Uh, fourteen is right over here and thirteen is right here.
Okay, and the closest residence to those two stations would be?
Uh, these two houses up on Union Valley.
That's quite, all right.
George, if you put that rubber on there, is that still gonna work properly?
That's what the sound company tells me.
Good, okay. So it's been tested, that's all. I just, you don't wanna put something on it that could deflect more after the-
This, this came from the sound company. They told, they're the ones that told me you can't just put, uh, the stuff on because it will degrade. You have to put this other material on that doesn't get degraded by UV.
That's fine. I just don't want you to put something on there that's gonna negate the first thing in the first place.
Right. So have you updated your plans, uh, the drawings to show the wings on the stations?
Yes. And, and there's, not currently, uh, sound barriers at twelve. There's gonna be one at twelve. There's also gonna be one at four.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, other questions from the board? You've been in front of us quite a few times, so if, can I, Anthony, make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, uh, close the public hearing. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, speak to Rose. Rose and I chatted, I, I think sometime March, we can get you on for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Yankee Land Development, Bayberry Hill Road and Owen Drive.
He did say close.
He said skip.
Here we go.
The motion was for scheduling a public hearing.
Correct. Right, yes.
Oh, you did say- I heard a clock.
No, no. It's your schedule.
I didn't see George fall down, so I-
I'll clarify that it was to schedule a public hearing.
Yankee Land Development. Uh, Mike, I don't believe you had any comments, correct?
Just an explanation. This is on for an extension of their, uh, re-grant, actually, of their preliminary approval. They have the new map coming in with two seven-lot subdivisions instead of the fourteen, just for build-out purposes. That's what they're proposing now.
Mike, since you, you've been here for a while, um, how many times have we extended this?
We just discussed that, and, uh, they plan on getting their map updated with the two-seven lot subdivision, so they can move forward with it the way they can build it. That's their plan at this moment, but-
Okay. Let me circle around to you. Thanks. Rich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, no objection, uh, to granting the hundred-and-eighty-day extension. Just the board should know, uh, to follow up with your question, February fifteenth, twenty-twelve is when the preliminary subdivision approval-
Wow.
-was given by the planning board. Um, there's a whole bunch of other things that will be needed, you know, stormwater permits and state, city, wetlands, you know, it's all in my memo, but if they're not gonna follow through on this one, they're gonna have to do it on the other two seven-lot subdivisions that they're looking to do in the future.
Thank you, Rich. Pat?
And no objection to the extension, Mr. Chairman, but, um, part of the delay in the revised plan was to update the survey on the property, which I think the applicant has just completed recently.
We finally just got a, a survey company to come out and do this, so it's been months that they made us wait.
So, so I just wanted to clarify and make sure I understand it as well as the board. We had a fourteen-acre parcel here. We subdivided into two-
Seven lots.
Two seven acres.
It's not fourteen acres, fourteen lots.
All right, fourteen lots, now it's seven lots. So we're not approving the, which is it? Which are we going forward with?
We're eventually gonna go forward with two seven-lot subdivisions. For right now, we're keeping the fourteen active until we can get the seven, two seven lots going with the board.
I, I guess what I, I just don't want both on the books, right?
Right.
It's just fourteen lots and two sevens, and, and we can state in the record then that we'll approve this fourteen lot to give you time to make the transition, but this will be the last approval on a fourteen lot.
We hope so, yep.
Well, we should let the record speak to that, then, right?
I don't think that that's optional now. I think they're saying this is the last one they're gonna give you.
Exactly.
After this, you're gonna continue with the two sevens.
With all due respect, I almost feel like, okay, we're gonna keep the fourteen lot going, we're gonna keep the two seven-
Well, the two sevens I don't have yet. Until we do, until we do our lot-line separation here, the two sevens will be in play at that time.
And that's your plan forward?
And that's our plan, but-
So tonight's extension is for the fourteen lot?
Yeah, this extension is-
Preliminary approval on thirteen, and it's not likely you'll get another extension on the fourteen lot plan.
Even if something went wrong and no one came, I, I'm, I'm just asking.
It's not a guarantee.
It's been over ten years, so if something goes wrong, bring it forward. We, we just wanna move, we actually wanna move this forward.
So do I. I'm just saying, but I don't, I don't know, these, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think there's any law that says that I can't keep going with the fourteen lot if I wanted to. I, I don't, I don't know.
Well, your-
That's a question-
So you're, so that you're, obviously, this is a discretionary approval of your board. So I think all the board's saying is, at some point in time, you're gonna transfer from fourteen to the two sevens. Um, and I remember, he only has preliminary approval on the fourteen lots. By the time he resubmits his two-seven lot plan, he can probably catch up to a preliminary approval stage before the preliminary on the fourteen expires. So it should be no foul. One more extension probably gets him there.
Right.
But the message is, at some point in time, you gotta Fisher cut base.
And like anyone else, if, if you do have problems along the way, let us know. We, we mean this as a positive. Let's get this thing going.
Fair enough, you know. I, I know you guys have been good to me, so, you know, of course.
Yes.
So we're granting a hundred-and-eighty-day extension.
For the fourteen lot subdivision.
Make a motion, right?
I'd say I'll make a motion to grant the, um, preliminary approval of the fourteen lot, uh, subdivision for a hundred-and-eighty days.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
See you guys.
Next on the agenda, Joe Zacken, fourteen Nicole Way. Mike?
This is on for bond reduction. I have no comments on this.
Rich?
So the applicant has requested a bond reduction for the reference project. The original bond amount, uh, was in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars. The bond has not been reduced in the past. Engineering department performed numerous site visits throughout the construction of the site, with the most recent being February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Based on the inspection, the performance bond items identified in the applicant's request, uh, are completed, and the bond can be reduced to ninety-eight-thousand dollars.
And Pat, no comments?
No comments.
So, Rich, explain to me why, um, ninety-eight thousand dollars, please?
Well, typically, we don't go lower than the twenty percent, but this is actually higher than the twenty percent. It's what they have remaining to do. They have, uh, asphalt to do on the property. They still have some, uh, stormwater work to do. You know, they still have some site features that need to be completed, landscaping. The, it's itemized in the list that was provided by their engineer, so.
By all means, if you wanna lower it, I mean, I'll take it lower.
Quite honestly, I think you did a great job up there. I know we've been around on this for a couple of years, and, um, you probably got a few gray hairs, actually, you don't from us on this, but, but, um- I was talking to Pat yesterday, preparing for today's meeting a little bit, and, um, I think this is a good example of, we got a great product. You did a great job on this. It might cost you a little bit more, but, um, it looks great, enters into our town. I think you did a great job on this.
Thank you.
I, I wanna second that sentiment. Every time I drive by, I, I look at the building and I said, it's nice, looks good, nice, nice work by all.
It's like a big house.
Yeah. We're, we're gonna use that as a model.
It's like a big house.
So do we have a, uh-
Motion to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on the bond reduction. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Pulte Homes of New York LLC, lot four only, Terrace Drive.
The attorney is not here yet.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, I spoke to, uh, Mike Caruso this evening, who is actually sitting as a town judge tonight. Said he was coming here afterwards. Um, I told him I would advise the board. I don't see any reason. We're, we're just setting a public hearing date. I'm happy to text him and let him know that and save him the trip. But there was somebody gonna be here.
Okay. Um, so, uh, if everyone else, we're just, tonight, um, talking about the bond return and talking about scheduling the public hearing. So, I, I'm fine with that, Joe, if you wanna notify him.
I'll let him know, yep.
So, then, I'll make a motion to-
Make the motion.
Yeah, schedule a public hearing for, um-
You gotta keep them separate.
Yeah, Pulte Homes, lot four, Terrace Drive.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also have on the agenda tonight, Pulte Homes, lot five, Terrace Drive. Ray, it's the same.
All right. I'll, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Pulte Homes, lot five, Terrace Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. By the way, um, for the board members, Rich and I and Pulte have toured that property, going through lots three, four, and five. So I feel pretty confident with moving forward. All right. Uh, next on the agenda is, for public hearings, Kiwi Country School, eight-twenty-five Union Valley Road. Mike?
Oh, public hearing. Uh, this is on for public hearing. All my comments have been addressed.
And Rich and Pat, I don't believe you had any comments either?
And, uh, no, and you have a, a draft resolution of approval for you this evening. This is for the yurts.
Anyone from the public wish to be heard?
Chairman, the only thing that was really discussed at the zoning board public hearing was the ability to get people off of the side roads and into their site for pickup of the kids. So I don't know if that's something you wanna discuss or try to get on there.
Yeah.
Think I'm on.
That's good.
Adam Thiberg, Inside Engineering Surveying, Landscape Architecture, PC. Um, yeah, so, uh, what, what did come up, uh, as, as Mike mentioned, was a, a couple of comments regarding traffic on Union Valley Road. Uh, so as was presented previously, the applicant's got a new queuing, uh, arrangement, which I think we've discussed. Um, we've got about eighteen-hundred linear feet of queuing space, uh, before parents who are picking up or dropping off hit the parent drop-off or pickup area. Uh, so queuing is happening on-site. Uh, in addition to that new queuing-
I'm sorry, Adam. So where was the queuing happening? Was it happening closer to the road, or where?
It would, it would be closer out, out to Union Valley Road, yeah. So, and again, uh, they come around here, they pick up, they drop off, and then they exit to, uh, to Blossom Lane and leave the site that way. In addition to, to, to that, um, they also have on-site, um, at the pickup and drop-off, a traffic safety, uh, team that are, uh, members of the, uh, or, or I should say employees of the camp, that help facilitate traffic moving through the site, coming in, going out. In addition to that, they also have, uh, a, a town police officer on-site from three-thirty to four-fifteen PM during the pickup, uh, to help facilitate, uh, all of that. I know, uh, the director, Will Yar, has made it clear that if there are any specific concerns of any of the neighbors, uh, that he is always, uh, available to, to field any of those issues and, and deal with that. But he did say that the bus drivers specifically are continually trained and, and, um, and, uh, directed. Uh, they, they do, they do park legally on Ernhoffer for five to ten minutes at, at pickup, um, before they come into the site, and they're continually trained on things that go without saying. Don't park in front of driveways, you know, be respectful of, of the neighborhood. And as Mike mentioned, we did get a couple of comments. I think we, we kind of fielded those at the ZBA and, you know, happy to respond to any others, but-
Just a quick question. What's the capacity of the school?
You know, I have, I have, uh, Dom, uh, Malazi, uh, Malaza.
Introduce yourself and-
Who might be able to speak to that.
My name is Dom Malaza. I'm the Logistics and Operations Manager for Kiwi Country Day Camp. Um, the capacity is five-hundred for the school, so to answer your question.
And that's full-time?
Uh, we, the school, we don't have a school year-round. Um, for the camp, our capacity is five-hundred for the summer.
So let me just clarify. Capacity is five-hundred. Are there five-hundred children on-site?
Not all at one time. We do have separate sessions for the summer.
So you're, you're a full camp, then you, okay. I didn't know there's capacity five-hundred and three-hundred there. Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
And just to that point, I'll just, again, point out that nothing that's being proposed with this site plan is in any way related to an anticipated increase in enrollment or, you know, increased intensity of use on the site.
The board got an education on yurts.
Yes.
Maybe yurts be with you.
Happy to give you a refresher, but I-
We need a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Just once again, is there any, uh, comments from the public? Anyone who wishes to be heard? Go ahead, Vicky.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for Kiwi Day Camp.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to adopt the final site plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. Adopt the final site plan. The resolution as written for the planning board of Town of Como, two-three-TAC zero-four, dated February twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Reference tax number seven-seven decimal one-seven-TAC-one-TAC-three-one and three-two. Kiwi Country Day School located eight-twenty-five Union Valley Road for the final site plan approval, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think the, uh, moving the, the agenda around was the right thing to do. Next on the agenda is Random Ridge Subdivision, Kenny Cut Hill Road. Mike?
Yeah, this is on for public hearing. I don't have any comments. I did drive by today. Up top where the, uh, pool used to be, the parking for the pool?
Mm-hmm.
There's piles of dirt. I assume you saw all that. Um, piles that, that looks like they just left behind, so maybe that's something that we need to make sure that they also address.
So Mike, I drove through there today also. Where, I'm not familiar where the pool was.
Would have been at the upper, the entry is at the lower side. As you come up, if it's on your left, keep going up on your left on the scene.
Oh, okay.
So there's like a dirt parking area. That's where they had the trailers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's where the construction trailer is from.
Yeah, had the trailers. Um, so, just another thought that they need to make sure that this is also addressed.
Is there an applicant here for, just, okay. Uh, Rich?
So as Mike mentioned, this is on for a public hearing. Um, the original, I don't have my memo in front of me, but the original, uh, intention was that the applicant wanted the bond to be reduced from six-hundred thousand to about three-hundred. At that time, they wanted to talk to us and walk the site with us, and after that, we've not heard back from the applicant. So, uh, they worked with the board. They basically said they would walk with you- they worked with the board. They basically said they would walk with you, Mr. Chairman, and myself, and anybody else who wanted to be there to talk about any particular, potential site deficiencies, which we're aware of, and we have not, again, heard from them.
And Pat?
This is a bond return. No chair, no comments.
So, Joe, help the board and I out here. I know we've spoken, and then I'll open up for the public hearing. So we're here, this board's here tonight to vote on the bond return. Am I correct that we have, we've, Rich just said, but we have not heard from the builder in this case, right?
So, I don't have the date, but we met with the applicant and their attorneys regarding their request for a bond reduction. And we had some reservations at the time of that meeting, but because they requested, we put it on an agenda. We opened the public hearing. We heard from a number of the residents up there. There was, the public hearing was left open. There was an agreement that we were going to, that they were going to follow up with a punch list and work items and things that were necessary to either reduce or return the bond. And we've heard essentially crickets since then. I haven't been contacted by counsel for the applicant. My understanding is the consultants haven't been contacted by the applicant. We're on for a continuation because I'd like for the board to close the public hearing formally. Obviously, you can take public opinion with respect to this matter, but in essence, it's a fait accompli because what was promised or what was efforted was never done. So there's really, and it's a de facto withdrawal of the request for the bond reduction by not appearing and not cooperating with the town. So my suggestion would be to close the public hearing. Obviously, you can certainly listen to input from the public, but my suggestion would be to close the public hearing and vote on a resolution to deny the bond return. And at that point, it'll be up to, essentially, the town engineer to provide town council and the town board with an update as to the assessment of this project for purposes of making a determination, which will come from the town board, as to whether or not to call the performance bond that is in place in connection with this matter. And this board's jurisdiction is concluded at that point.
Thank you, Joe. That was very helpful. So, for the benefit, if anyone, look, this is a public hearing. I do want to grant you time to speak. But if you just heard what Joe says, we're not going to return the bond tonight. We're going to vote on it, but I don't see us returning the bond tonight. We're going to hold the bond. And in summary, then, the issue or your concerns go to the town board. But if you have anything you want to come up here and say that you haven't already said or that we don't know about, I'm happy to give you some time. Just state your name and, thank you.
Thank you so much. So my name is Rubia Valenti. I'm the HOA president, also on the HOA board at Random Ridge. We have 20-plus people here tonight. Since our last meeting, the developer closed the last house on October 7th, and then since then, they removed the construction truck from site. And at the area that you saw today, they basically dropped all the construction trash there and left it. I actually have pictures, if you want to take a look, of what it looks like.
Yeah, I was out there today. Yeah, yeah.
So they basically left, yeah, you can hold it if you want, and, but they basically left all the trash there. But besides that, we have made several attempts to contact them, and I received a letter from the DEP as well, addressed to myself, because I'm on the board, saying that the DEP has also tried multiple times to contact the developer without any answers. Phone calls, emails, and everything. And basically, they state that, you know, they were required to install rain gardens on several subdivisions, as well as an underground infiltration system behind lots 27 and 28. They have failed to comply to these requirements for the date of this letter. If you go to the second page, it says the DEP has made multiple additional attempts to contact the developer via email and phone, but has not received any response. So that actually is an additional cost on top of what we already assume is going to be a cost for something that needs to be done. So that should be added to that original letter that we submitted, because we were not aware that this was something that needed to be done at the time. So we really want to thank you for not reducing the bond. We really appreciate, and we really look forward to what the next step is going to be, because honestly, we've been there for a long time now. They're done, and we really have no idea when they will complete what they promised to us. So it would be great to, to know what the next steps will be for, for everyone.
So I believe it's a $600,000 bond we still have?
Six hundred and change, I forget.
650,000.
So, just, Joe, can you?
Is that, do you have an extra copy of this, so we can give it to the town engineer?
We have copies.
I think.
Yeah. So that was just for you to see, since I was, yeah.
So, Joe, can you reiterate next steps? Like, we're going to hold on to the bond tonight. We're going to close the public hearing.
Yeah, so, so your next steps are very simple, okay?
I'm more concerned with what the residents is.
Well, they can provide further information to Rich regarding bondable issues at the site, and he will compile those, probably put them in, in memo form to the town attorney and town board, so that they can then put the issue on to a work session to discuss the next steps, whether that be speaking directly with the bonding agency or commencing an action to call the bond.
And just a question. If the bond is indeed called, how does it work? Do you work closely with the HOA?
Again, it's not the purview of this board, so I'm not going to get into that.
Okay.
Because it's, it's beyond the scope of this, this board's jurisdiction. I'm sure if you want, you can talk to the town attorney with respect to that, but that's not what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Please state your name.
My name is Emily Sabatella. I am a lifelong resident of Putnam County. I've been a teacher for 17 years, so I suppose my, like, lifetime of children has kind of made me categorize people into, like, good guys and bad guys. And we unfortunately are all suffering because we, we chose to build our beautiful homes with a bad guy. And I, I know that I'm speaking to a board who's helping us to use the money that they have retained to sort of help fix the problem, but I just would have been remiss not to at least speak to, to you on, you know, behalf of our community, that we're, we're counting on you to be the heroes, if there's good guys, bad guys, and heroes. And we need just the support. So I recognize the point that this is not the board that tells us those next steps, but I just want to make sure to say my piece in keeping it like an amicable relationship in which we recognize that we have been so grossly wronged by how this project is being abandoned, and it cannot become our fiscal responsibility. We are, like, full-time employees. We're mothers. We're fathers. We're community members, and we need some kind of reconciliation and to be made whole from this. And I get nauseous every time I think about it, because I don't understand it all the way, and I can't afford to supplement the amount that we need to finish the space. The fact that it hasn't been paved and there's, like, concerns about how it was paved so that we can turn it over to make it a town road, so that we're not fiscally responsible for having it be a private road and being plowed all the time. Like, these are genuine concerns that are falling on us financially, and we're not a, we're like, individual residents or a community, and we need the support of a bigger establishment to help protect us from what has been done here. And it's just disappointing that, like, the bond was reduced so dramatically early on in the project against the bad guy, like she won, you know? And so I just really hope that we can be made whole in all this. So thank you for the support you've given us thus far, and I really look forward to not being nauseous every time I think about where I'm, where I live.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, the deficiencies with respect to the roads up there are something that the town engineer is well aware of, which is why they're not, they don't make specifications for dedication. So that's definitely an issue that we're well aware of.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Joe, when this goes to the town board, is there a open session? I watch, I attend a lot of town board meetings. I watch a lot of town board meetings, and there's usually three minutes that you can speak before the rest of the agenda? That is just, is that something, will this, will this agenda be published so people can come out and be heard with the town board?
So the, the agenda's always going to be published. Because this has the potential for litigation, it may be discussed in executive session only. So I can't answer that question. It wouldn't be fair to the town board for me to, to put them in a box with respect to that.
No, no, it's education for myself.
Yeah, but it, it potentially involves litigation, so it would be ripe for an executive session.
But even if it's an executive session, that would not prevent residents from coming up in the three-minute public hearing part and just saying their piece. They may not get any feedback.
That's part of every town board, as far as.
Yeah, they may not get feedback from the town board, but you can at least be heard.
The better way to do it, in my opinion, would be to address those to the town engineer, so that he can incorporate those into a single document to the town attorney and town engineer. That, that's the better way to do it, in my opinion.
So did everybody hear that? You know the town engineer, Tranzetti. Rich will be rolling up, forwarding your information to the town board and to the town supervisors. So consolidate, get your information to Rich. He will take it forward.
I just, and I will do that. My memo, I think, prior speaks to a lot of those issues that are performance bond-based. Some of them are, some of your concerns are performance bond-based. Some of them aren't. We could certainly bring that up and talk to the town board. It would be part of the record given to the town board. But the focus here is, if we're, if the, if the town board is going to call a bond, it has to be based on the information that is bondable, right? So it can't be, if you didn't like your roofing, you know, I, I use that as a silly example, then that's not, you know, what we can call the bond on. But there are issues here that are bondable issues. That is why this discussion was had. That is why they came in for a public hearing. They wanted to reduce the bond amount for the information that they believe that was completed, right? And so they've never come back, as we said before. That's already stated. So that's where we're at. So maybe the super, chairman and I can still walk the site, look at it. We could talk together. We had talked about walking the site before, when the applicant was going to be there, give us a punch list. I can come up with that punch list along with you guys. You've given me a lot of information already. I have received it, so I don't want you to think I'm not receiving it. Just, I want to have it in the public forum here when we have everybody here at the board. So, and then we can certainly go out, if any of the board members or anybody wants to be there, we can certainly walk around and look at those deficiencies based on the performance bond.
Yeah, Rich, if you'd let me know, I'll definitely show you.
No problem.
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Julie O'Connor, and I just wanted to ask you, Rich. I don't know, I have a copy of the bond, but it doesn't have, it doesn't have the attachment that talks about what actually is bondable. So can I work with you to get a copy of that so we understand exactly what's bondable?
Sure. My suggestion is you can contact Rose, and she will get you a copy tomorrow. She's in the office. We'll get you a copy of that tomorrow.
Okay. Because there's no homeowner that's fighting over anything in their house or any kind of little things like that. And I think there's only, like, four main issues. It's the final top coat of the road. It's this DEP water infiltration plant. It's the landscaping plan.
All bondable items, all performance bondable.
And the cleanup of the, what we refer to as the trailer area, which you mentioned earlier. It's, it's really just those four things, I believe, that we're concerned about.
So the first three are bondable. It depends on what the, what the site plan that was approved had for that area. Obviously, there shouldn't be trash there, right? But what that's supposed to look like, that would fall back to the landscaping, what that should be looking like on the grand scheme of things. So, again, bondable issues.
Okay. So just for us, for, for next steps, then, the board should just reach out to you, Rich, and work with you to come up with this list that you'll then forward on to the town board for the issue to rest with them, I guess?
So my suggestion, you're, I mean, you're represented by an HOA. My suggestion would be to have some member of the HOA compile an aggregate listing and just send that over in one shot to Rich, so he can incorporate that into his memo.
Okay. I think you have everything that we've talked about previously, but I will do that tomorrow.
Yeah, so appoint a single person. It's just easier that way. You guys all talk amongst yourselves, have a single person get us that info. I'll work with that person. We'll go with it from there. I mean, it, it just makes it a lot easier. We, trust me, it'll make it a lot easier, because I start getting phone calls from three different people on working one way, and it just pulls us all in different directions, mostly me. So, and I want to be able to be most efficient and effective with this.
Okay, so one of us will reach out to you.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I don't want to cut any time short for any residents. It's a public hearing. If anyone else wants to be heard, I know I like that you consolidated, brought your concerns forward, but if anyone else wishes to be heard, please feel free to.
Mr. Chairman, being able to know more public comments, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to hold them?
To deny.
Okay.
One other thing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny the reduction of the bond.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That puts a lot of pressure on you, Rich. Look, there were no minutes distributed. So do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a mo, no, make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.